I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. If you haven't signed us in the files, I'll ask you to do that at this time. We've got a copy of the minutes from the previous meeting. I'll ask for a motion when you're ready to make a motion to approve those minutes.
I move we approve the minutes.
February eighteenth.
Yep, February eighteenth.
Motion from Richard and a second from Carol to approve the minutes of February. Huh?
Shirley.
Shirley, Carol Shirley. Well, Carol wasn't here. I want to give her some. Thank you, Shirley. Good to meet you. Second from Shirley. And any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'll just have the shoe painted. Okay. Next thing is, uh, financial report. And then the public hearing. Got the financial report. An up-to-date financial report. Thank you, Leslie. Even if she's not in here, we can relay that to her. She could finally have that. I do have a question. I'm assuming the high expense that we're up at is because we've so many things we've passed over the years.
Yes. But February, um, February is when our bond payments are due. And we did have the new 2024 Texas Water Development Board payments. So we're all going to have to do that.
That's what I.
And Leslie and I did talk and that is in line with tax share.
Okay. I know that happened as far as the year. I was looking sure. Everything else looks good. I'll have to have that. Okay. Anybody have any questions about the financial factor? Financial report. Okay. Next item. Item. Public hearing, uh, case number twenty-five dash zero zero two, and applicant Julie, yes, Super Eight filed a request to rezone property listed thirty-nine hundred I twenty, uh, Easton, Texas, seven six four four eight. The property description, parcel number eighteen two ten, John House Abstract one fifty-nine to C two commercial, fully to fully zone parcel C two commercial for construction of restaurant in the area currently zone AO ag open. We will open that public hearing at this time. It is six oh four. I know it's not quite, but I'm going to give it six oh four. We'll go to six oh nine. I allow five minutes for public hearings. If no one has any comments, does anyone here have any comments about that property?
Can I just explain where it is?
It is. Is this address actually correct? Because I pulled up the address and pulls up the hotel. There's the Super Eight. Go ahead, Tommy.
Okay, so here is the Super Eight itself.
Yeah.
This is the parcel that is with Super Eight. And the way that it's currently zoned, similar to the one we had with La Quinta where they were half commercial, half ag open. This parcel is the same way. You can see commercials over here by where the little RV park is. They were interested in developing this lot next to the access road for, uh, what was mentioned at the time was a, a future restaurant. And, uh, Mr. Dahlwall is here right now. And if you have any questions of him, he'd be more than welcome to, uh, help you with that. Uh, with us, we had, uh, seven properties around that were within the two hundred feet. There were four letters sent out. There were four owners of the seven properties. We did get responses back. We got a four response from, uh, Marilyn Massengill, Urin, and the rest of the owners of the property that's here out of the county. They were for it. Um, Jamie Rodriguez, who owns this little house, you're back up. This little property right here. They said they were against, but they did not give a reason. And they hadn't contacted us with a reason why. They just said they were against it. Uh, no comments from anybody else around it, except for when we had the meeting last week for planning zoning. The prop- the property owner for La, uh, La hacienda came in and he stated that he was for, uh, the change to allow for the restaurant nearby. He felt like it'd be a good thing to have another restaurant there, you know, for Easton. Um, he did bring up a concern about parking for big trucks. Apparently, he's had some issues in the past. And he just wants to make sure that Mr. Dahlwall, and I've spoken with him about this, that they will, uh, be good neighbors with each other. If, uh, Laha has a problem, he's going to work with, uh, on his side and try to, uh, make sure that anybody that's, uh, using his hotel is not going to be blocking or taking up any of Laha's parking either here or on the back side either.
Okay. The property on the, I don't know what you call it, the west side of the road there, the little blue square.
This area.
Yeah, that.
Mm-hmm.
What is that?
That's the parking for Laha. That's their overflow parking there.
Ah, the little square or whatever. You know, it's not a square, but it's a far end.
This one here.
And that is?
That's Mr., um, Rodriguez. That's their home there.
Okay. Now, who, who was against it and they didn't say anything about?
That, this one right there.
That guy right there?
Yeah, yeah. That was the only, um, negative, uh, response back from the owners.
Okay. They didn't give a reading. They're just against it.
Yeah, he didn't say he was against it.
Ah.
Well, as I said, Mr. Dahlwall is here. He'd be happy to take any questions from the information. So about that parking on the back, uh, you can see on the backside of that Super Eight that the, uh, the, on the, on the backside, on the Laha, Laha hacienda and.
On the backside of the Super Eight. That the big truck parking, they just purchased the truck parking and, uh, the Laha hacienda. So they always use, have, like, go around. We never had a problem right now for that. Like, even in our RV park, we will be happily doing the half of RV park to the converting to the property. So like, easily there will be like, even you guys go and look at it, easily there will be like twenty, at least twenty spots for parking, uh, for parking.
Where the RV places.
Yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, where there is a car set right now, that, that, that we can, uh, the back parking and we can make the front parking. So like, big trucks, like eighteen-wheelers can go around.
There'll be access to this property off of the a, access road?
Yes, yes, yes. So even now, the all eighteen-wheelers to go around with from, because in Super Eight and the RV park, there's a big spot. So they goes around like that to, uh, just all of it around.
And when he goes to develop, uh, and build there, parking is required. There are parking requirements are required as far as based off of the size of what he's going to do. And so whenever we get into that portion of it, that's when we can revisit this and make sure that, that it's going to be enough, um, to, uh, not cause any hurt feelings around the side there. And if you're open to it, then we can maybe even have the Laha come in and visit just so everybody has a good feeling about it whenever it comes time to develop.
So what we're seeing right now, are those, are those buildings or are those trucks? I can't tell.
Those are, this right here.
The little one and.
Yeah, so that, those are.
Are those RVs?
Yeah, that's our area, our area.
But there is a, like a motel there too, right? In front.
That's, that's in the blue right here.
Oh, that's, okay, gotcha.
Super Eight motel right there.
So this is just undeveloped. This is an undeveloped area currently.
Yeah.
And he will have to, uh, visit with text also whenever it comes time to try to get an entrance off of them for, uh, for access and parking as well. And that's going to be part of it whenever he gets ready to actually break ground up there.
Text out an entrance from the access road?
Mm-hmm. He'll have to visit with them on that.
Okay.
Yeah. Similar to anybody else trying to get something down the main drag as well.
Whatever happened to our traction to get an access road, eastern access farther down?
I was not part of those. That was, I know Ron was working on that. I know JJ was as well. That's something that, uh, I don't know if Savannah was brought up to speed on that. That was just above me with, with the, with the discussion.
And there's something between old and eastern back by the.
Yeah.
Park, the EDI was pushing for that too. Have you ever had any discussion on that?
I think when we found out that the text dot did not feel it necessary, so we were going to be responsible for paying for it and the cost was prohibited. The text dot was not with. Same thing we were at, that Cisco ran into where they built the three spec, uh, businesses out there. Where if you exited, you'd have to go back to get them. They thought text dot was going to move their access, their ramp. And they said, sure, we'll move it, but you pay for it. And that's where we were at. And I'm limited on this a little bit, but I, I think what we said is you come back to down the road when there's more businesses out there that need access. Because right now, there's not that many that require Blake Fuller, Marti, this development here wouldn't, wouldn't qualify for that. Uh, but I think that's probably a future development and.
They, I just. Not near industrial park and trying to get that brought in where it's before that. Okay. All right. Anything else?
Here.
I show it to be six eleven. We'll close the public hearing. Okay. Thank you very much. Item number seven on the agenda. Item number seven is the Board of City Commissioners to discuss and take action on the following agenda items. Item number one, discussion consideration of a presentation by the Eastern County Child Welfare, Welfare Board, asking for a proclamation proclaiming the month of April twenty twenty-five Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month.
That would be Kay and I here. Uh, we have a board of eleven ladies that try to help foster children. Uh, any of the children that are abused or have any of those kind of problems and need extra items, we try to provide that. And what we'd like to do, I think we have, what is it? Three, six kids in the Eastland County area right now that can come to us and ask if they need clothing or if they need mattresses. Uh, and then we vote on it. We have what's called a rainbow room that's, um, stocked with clothing and shoes and diapers and cleaning supplies, all kinds of things to try to help. The kids are maybe a single mom or whoever that gets these kids and needs the help. And so we wanted to have April designated as Child Abuse Awareness Month. And so we'd like to get you to sign this proclamation. You can, if you want to put it in the paper, if you want to be on the courthouse square and read it to the public, uh, however works with you guys. And I think the Crisis Center in the past has done some of this, but for whatever reason, this year we're doing it. And it's a great, great thing that we're doing for the, for the kids in the community.
Let me read this, because this is actually done, uh, normally. I can just do this. This is actually done where the city commission is doing this one. So, uh, proclamation proclaiming the month of April Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas the children are vital, are vital to our community, uh, for future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. Whereas nearly sixty thousand children receive services from the Children's Advocacy Center in Texas annually. Whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people. Whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs that benefit children and their families. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of the partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and business community. Therefore, the City of Easton City Commissioners are hereby proclaiming April as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month and call upon all cities, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live. I'll entertain a motion to approve that proclamation.
I move we approve the proclamation.
Richard makes a motion to approve the proclamation.
I'll second the motion.
Carol is made a second. Any other discussion?
I have a question. On that rainbow room that you were talking about, do y'all have, uh, do you ask for donations or have fundraisers? Or is that just things you buy with the phones?
We take donations, uh, like for Christmas, for instance, we buy for all these kids. We get a list of them, what they'd like to have. And through the donations that we take in through the year, we take that money and go and buy specifically for these kids off of their list if we can, so they get what they are asking for. And so donations can be made at any time to, uh, our.
So that's mainly how you supply your room is donations?
Yeah. And it's, uh, it's really an amazing thing if you were to go out there to see all the things. Because if they call us, let's say they need rent money because they're about to be kicked out of their apartment or whatever. We take that under discussion. And then we do everything we can to figure out if there's other alternatives. Uh, what we can maybe help them get it in other ways. But if not, then we have the funding to do that for them on a one-time basis, let's say. So it's pretty far-reaching. Uh, there's so many rules and regulations concerning these kids. And we try to stay up to date on those so that if we're asked for a, like, if they ask us for a mattress, we have to make sure that mattress is for that child and not for the grandmother that's taking care of that. I mean, there's just lots of regulations and things. So we try to help in any way we can. Sometimes we can't. But normally, we figure out a way to, to help provide for these kids and.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Could I get a signature on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for doing that.
You know, it's a very worthwhile, worthwhile talk.
Get her to sign it and then they get it in.
Okay. We appreciate y'all's help on that too.
Item number two, discuss consideration, case number twenty-five dash zero zero two, applicant, uh, Julie Dahlwall, Super Eight filed a request to rezone the property, which we just had a public hearing on. And then we, in the next one, we'll approve zoning it from AO to C two.
Tommy's going to put the picture.
Oh, yeah, I can go back. So.
These pictures were bad.
Yeah. So I, that's why I did this is because it came over black and white. You can't really see the color codes. So this is, for any development in that part of that parcel, it's going to have to be zoned C two regardless. Um, with ag open, it's, there's only very few things that can be done in that type of zoning type. And it's mostly like the residential ag type of, of use. So for anything that's going to be, excuse me, on the, um, access road in a commercial area, we would need to have this rezoned for C two either way.
Okay. Why don't we have the deals in our packet to show the bar and against application that people have?
That is my fault. We had two. And whenever, uh, she was getting the packets together, I had been working on something else and forgot to get them to her in time.
Okay. At least we don't only have those because of the big deal, but sometimes that can be.
No, that's not my fault. That's my fault.
Okay. All right. Anybody have anything else you want to add to or change or need to approve the request to rezone that property?
I move we approve the, the rezoning, uh, case number twenty-five dash zero zero two.
Motion from Richard.
I'll second that.
Second from Shirley to approve, uh, rezoning the property in case number twenty-five zero zero two. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item number three, discuss consideration to approve the first reading of order twenty-five dash nine one six to rezone the property, uh, mentioned above, from AO to C two, at the ag open to commercial two. entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-five dash nine one six to rezone the property as we've been discussing from AO to C two.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Shirley and a second from Richard to approve twenty-five, order twenty-five dash nine one six to rezone the property, uh, from AO to C two. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Dahlwall, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, discuss consideration of the Eastern Youth Sports Advisory Board member resignation. And that is resignation of Marcus Marti, who's informed Stephen Guston, the president, that he couldn't do that. He's, he's too busy. But we need to accept his resignation.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Marcus Marti, the Eastern Youth Sports Advisory Board.
Carol, motion to accept Marcus Marti's resignation to repute the Sports Advisory Board.
Thank you.
Richard made a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item number five, discuss consideration of ESAB Board member appointment, and that's replacing Marcus Marti. And his name is.
Mitch Bradford.
Where is it? Yeah, Mitch. I know in the media, there you have Mitch Bradford, replacing, uh, Mitch Bradford on the Eastern Youth Sports Advisory Board.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Mitch Bradford to the Eastern Youth Sports Advisory Board.
I'll second that too.
Motion from Shirley and second from Richard to appoint Mitch Bradford to the Eastern Youth Sports Advisory Board. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six, discussion consideration of moving alternates to full members of the Board of Adjustments. And this was done by their board and we have to approve that, uh, to make, uh, Norman Owen and Vicky Armstrong move them from alternate, Vicky Armstrong, move them from alternate position to full members.
Coach doesn't have alternate, sir.
There will be alternate positions still open. Yalvin? I, I kind of beat Bill's record and run the space in between Board of Adjustments. He can insist because we haven't had one. Uh, and in that time, you know, we lost Morton and we brought Mary back on. And then, uh, Kelly moved out of the city limits and Gina had moved also. And so Norm and Vicky both said they'd be willing to move up, become, uh, full board members. And, uh, we still have those spots open. I think I have one or two, um, that will be willing to fill in some of the alternate positions. So we'll bring those later on once we, I can make sure on that. And then the next action item is a, is a, is a new member as well.
And a motion to appoint Norman Owen and Vicky Armstrong to a full member of the Board of Adjustments. Shirley, Shirley made a motion.
I'll second.
Richard made the second for Norman and Vicky to be full members of the Board of Adjustments. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number seven, discussion consideration of appointing a full, appointing a full member to the Board of Adjustments.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointing Rebecca Massengill as a full member to the Board of Adjustment.
Motion from Carol.
Second.
Second from Richard to appoint Rebecca Massengill to the Board of Adjustment. Started on the planning of zoning board already. That's good. You have someone, and she's the one that goes to both, and she?
She and Vicky, uh, are both of them.
They're both of those around. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number eight, discussion consideration to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash zero for declaring the unopposed candidate and cancellation of the May third, twenty-twenty-five election. Both the new candidates are here, yep. Okay. We need to.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash oh four declaring unopposed candidates and the cancellation of the May third, twenty-twenty-five election for the city of Easton.
Got a motion from.
I'll second.
Second from Richard.
It's May third.
It's May fourth.
Where'd it say that?
On the resolution.
Is that not the right date for the election?
No, it should say twenty-twenty-five. Oh, and it says twenty-twenty-four, yeah.
Oh.
Mine says twenty-twenty-five. Oh, not the resolution, no.
Ah.
Should say May third, twenty-twenty-five.
Well, I read this over here. May third, and that's a, what's the actual date? The third?
First Saturday, May third.
So we need a motion approving twenty-two-five dash zero four with the noted mistakes, and those can be fixed for the May third, twenty-twenty-five general election.
I'll so move it.
Carol made the motion and Richard makes the second on canceling the election and the unopposed candidate. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you. My glass off.
All right. Item number nine.
Sorry. Tell me again, who made the motion?
Carol made the motion. Glad to be so. And Richard made the second. Item number nine, discuss consideration to approve second reading of order twenty-five dash nine one three, the cargo container uses. An ordinance of the City of Easton, Texas, amending that chapter nineteen zoning, Article One zoning ordinance of the Eastern Code of Ordinances to establish certain cargo containers that permitted uses in specified districts and to enact regulations relating thereto by providing repealing clause and servability clause and providing for an effective date. We've been through this multiple times. Now, anybody have any questions about this before we move forward? This is the second reading.
I move that we pass the, the second reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash nine fourteen.
Nine thirteen?
Nine thirteen.
Yeah, nine thirteen.
It's just nine fourteen.
I think. I'll second that motion.
Twenty-five nine, what's Richard reading?
I think, are you on the next agenda item?
Nine thirteen, what we're on. Item number nine, Richard.
Nine. Where's the head of his game now? Wow, I pulled one up.
You said nine.
Okay, twenty-five dash nine thirteen. I apologize.
Richard make a motion to approve order twenty-five dash nine one three.
And I'll second that.
Shirley made a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, Richard, item number ten. Discuss consideration to approve the second reading of order twenty-five dash nine one four, creating a limited business zoning district. An ordinance of the City of Easton, Texas, amending chapter nineteen zoning of the City of Easton Code or ordinances by revising section nine dash three zoning district to add a limited business district zoning designation, amending section nine dash eleven permitted uses to establish permitted uses for limited business districts, amending section nine dash one two height and area requirements to establish height and area requirements for the limited business district, providing repealing clause and servability clauses and providing an effective date. Y'all remember what that was about?
Uh, yeah. A move that we pass, uh, ordinance number twenty-five dash nine fourteen on the second reading.
I'll second that.
Richard made a motion to approve order twenty-five dash nine one four. Shirley had made a second. Any other discussion?
This is, uh, show what you're presenting, is that right? Maybe that you're building down there and we're talking about.
No, no, no.
No, no, no?
This was, this was for creating, um, a, uh, like an office-type use zoning, um, district. And this is for out there by the woodlands where next to the.
Okay, okay.
For those two lots and the side of that. And also for anywhere else in town where there's residential area where this type of very limited office, you know, eight to five minutes per Friday, you just won't upset the area if somebody wants to.
Okay. I was confused.
It's okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Richard made a motion and Shirley made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eleven, discussion consideration to approve second reading of order twenty-five dash nine one five and ordinance of the City of Easton, Texas, appealing and replacing order twenty-five dash nine one two, adopting a mini comprehensive rate and fee schedule, established rates and fees to be charged for city services, providing repealing clause, providing servability clauses, clause, and establishing an effective date.
I move that we pass, uh.
What did we do this one for? What was in this?
This one out of the cemetery fees and, uh, updating the curb stock pricing.
That's the one that had to be fixed a couple of times.
Had that fixed.
And the trash pricing.
It's fixed. I move that we pass ordinance twenty-five nine fifteen on the second reading.
A motion from Richard to pass order twenty-five nine one five on the second reading. Was that Shirley or Carol? Made a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number twelve, discuss consideration of using hotel, motel occupancy tax or improvements for the Eastern Ballpark. You've got the information in here that they gave us. Uh, twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars was the second bid that came in, uh, lower than the first bid of technically fifty-nine thousand, but it's split in half, but this, uh, split in two pieces. But this is a much. But this is a much cheaper bid, almost half of what the original bid was and this is going to.
The request is to use the hotel motel and it is an allowed expenditure since we own the ball fields. And so that's what you're approving is to allow the hotel motel funding to approve the high caliber quote for twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. And the EYSAB did approve this quote. But it's before you to use hotel motel funds. We're trying to fix the drainage problem. Did we talk about this the last meeting?
I don't know. The problem with the ball fields, which we've neglected for years and it's been a problem for the forty years the ball field, ball fields have been there. There's water coming down off the hill, runs through the ball fields. They're wanting to come to the bottom of that hill, park hill, by the ball fields and build a trench and to drain it so the water goes into that trench and goes around. Now, obviously, I think as time goes on, we'll have to do some clean out. Whether the city does it or we pay a contractor to get in there, the right equipment to do that. And maybe something we've got to address down the road. But that ball field has got a drainage problem, has had a drainage problem for a long time because of that hill. And this is a solution and I think a pretty nice price for what we add first and what they're trying to do, this board that we put together. Who you just approved members on back and forth, getting off, marching party and and those things, those guys are trying, they're all working together and doing a pretty good job with what they're trying to do. And they've had surveyors come out there, people come out there that know what they're looking at, know what to do about dirt, get dirt to move in the right place, get the water to go to the right place. So that's what this is all about.
So by using the hotel motel taxes, we can do that in order for them to bring in tournaments, is that?
Exactly what that's about.
If you, you can use this because we own the ball fields and it's for a sports facility.
Yeah, and, and hotel motel because they do have tournaments and
Yes.
And we were talking about, in fact, I had a discussion last night, somebody at my house, that they are about to start advertising, talking about having a blog, whatever, to talk about the youth sports advisory board and what they're trying to do and how they're supporting the ball field and also about the different leagues in the, the Easton, what's the?
ESL, Easton Sports.
Easton Sports Organization, ESL. And, and all the different league, you've got the eight, nine under, ten, nine under, twelve and under baseball, eight, nine under, ten, nine under, twelve and under softball, plus an older age baseball and softball too, probably in that field. Talk about all of those things, what's they're trying to do. I call it advertising for the ball field and what they're trying to do and I think that helps a lot. And, and we've had tournaments in the past and you've had some of these tournaments, people become a pretty good distance, it's been money initially and that's how we're able to support the ball field through that. But fact number one, that we own the ball field. So.
Well, I make a motion to approve using the hotel motel occupancy tax for improvements to the Easton Ballpark.
Second.
Made a motion from Carol and a second from Richard and that price of twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. If we'd have knocked a thousand dollars off, we wouldn't even have to approve that, but we're not playing that game. So they can end up to twenty-five thousand without our approval by our own politicians. A good price, that's really a.
Good price.
Really a, what we looked at the first time, sixty thousand dollars gone. A motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same time. Motion carries. Item number thirteen. Discussion consideration of authorizing opening of an additional bank account at First Financial Bank.
So this bank account is for the animal control donations account. We currently do not have an account where our animal control donations are going. It's going into the general fund and we keep a ledger of it. Chief Fitz has requested that we open a bank account up specifically for animal control donations. We've been receiving quite a bit of donations and this helps us. It helps the chief.
We've got some good donations for that, that's a neat, that's a neat deal. Three signatures on this, any two of these can sign, is that what they are?
Correct, yes.
The two of these three have to sign.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty, twenty-five dash oh five authorizing the opening an additional bank account at First Financial Bank for the animal control donation account.
A motion from Shirley and a second from Richard to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five, opening a additional, First Financial Bank bank account for animal control. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same time. Motion carries. Item number fourteen, discussion consideration of approved the purchase of the Tex dot property. And that is another home run economic development. Director Terry Slavens is here and Terry, you want to talk about this or?
It's a, it's a piece of property that Tex dot doesn't need anymore, they're keeping it right away in case they do need to do some things later on. But there's a potential development coming in out there that this is crucial for us to have. Even if that falls through, EBI needs those these properties. Yeah, I mean, the, the, the appraised value came in because there's a fiber optic, no, a water line and a internet line, a fiber optic line. They're going right through the middle of it, somebody's got to move. So a similar lot and off the interstate in Ranger was listed for something, three hundred thousand. We're buying this one, or we'll have to offer it as well for a hundred and twenty-six thousand.
One fifty-six.
One fifty-six, hundred fifty-six thousand dollars.
Plus any additional costs associated.
That, that would be, yeah, we'll be at the hundred fifty-six thousand mark. Because the purchaser that brought us up to is willing to pay any additional charges that may be involved.
Me too.
Exactly as this, Terry.
Do you know where the windmill is? There's the, that's the windmill right behind, the windmill stays with Tex dot. The horse and the windmill and that corner stays with Tex dot. And I asked that question earlier. It shows it in this package that you have here. If you're interested in looking what the actual property is, the second page from the back shows that little corner cut off. Uh, this is, this is where the, it's coming into town. And there's your, the horse and the windmill and all that right here. They're cutting it off here. Well, that, they want that, as we talked about, the easement stuff, to be able to make that right turn, how they've cut that back already and making that right turn and somebody's got to be responsible with that windmill and that horse. I think I make Terry the head, took the bottle washer out there, but he kept it in Tex dot. Good job of the chief of police, wouldn't he? But that, the windmill stays with Tex dot.
The windmill stays with Tex dot and if they, and as we all know, there's going to be some additional work probably done out there down the road. But they need to keep that.
Well, Tex dot, if I know, can remember from past time, Tex dot actually built that windmill and the horse and the light, all that, Tex dot did all of that.
We did that, but then, we bought the land, all that was money from, from the economy developments.
But Tex dot did it. Tex dot built it.
They built it, yeah. We, we found the windmill and everything else. Marcy Pearson found it.
Yeah. It's a neat deal. That's a neat, that's a good property and a good buy. This is a good, another move for Easton. Entertained a motion to approve the purchase of that property for economic development. Hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar, point zero nine, point eight nine zero five acres. Almost a full acre.
I saw move.
And Richard made a motion to approve the purchase of the Tex dot property, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And Shirley made a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same time. Motion carries. Thank you, Terry, good work. Item number fifteen, discussion consideration of approving updated contract with Easton County Joint Elections Administrator.
So this is a updated, in our local agreement with Easton County. We have currently used them and in the past used them. I think this was created in twenty twelve. This year we sat down and we updated it since several areas around us have had recall elections and the county wants to make it clear that they are not responsible for extra elections. They are only responsible for elections that are held on uniform election dates. So any election that's held in May and November, the fee that we pay of seven thousand dollars will be covering those elections. Anything extra outside of that is at cost to us.
That's costly, we were having the election.
Yes, here was having elections. I'm talking about Easton though.
Please.
And it was six thousand dollars, but they did go up to seven thousand and we've already paid our seven thousand dollars. And you pay this seven thousand dollars whether you have an election or not.
Yeah, that's a fine part of that.
It's well worth it.
And that comes out of the two new candidates' pockets.
Is everybody paying the same?
Yes, everybody is paying the same.
Well.
Motion to resign.
Everybody that's listed. Everybody that's listed in the agreement is, and we have established that we will start meeting annually to make sure that this is good and working for everybody.
Okay. You say we're going to start doing this annually?
Yes.
Over thirteen years doesn't work, huh?
No, unfortunately.
I make a motion to approve the updated contract with the Easton County Joint Elections Administrator.
Second.
Got a motion from Carol and a second from, from Richard to approve the updated contract for the Eastern County Election, Joint Elections Administrator. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same time. Motion carries. Item number sixteen. Discussion consideration of appoint Tammy Archer as the Associate Municipal Court Judge.
What can we do?
You can, I think this has been a lot of discussion about this in the last couple of days and you may hear some kickback. But this is actually something that we've been doing for ten years at least. Paying Tammy Archer to come over, she worked for the city of Ranger and would come over and help us out. We have these municipal court judges and I may have the chief of Savannah. I'll at least say what I can think about, remember from all this. But we get juveniles or we get classy and Mister Mean, we're overloading the jail and we've been told from the sheriff that we've got to fix this problem because people are not getting reined, is that the proper word, fast enough? There's a law, you got three days to get this done, juveniles, that kind of, several things involved. Now, you ask, we've been using her for ten years.
I don't, I don't think we've been using her that long.
Oh, we have. We verified that today.
I don't.
But we have been paying her.
We're not paying her.
We're not paying her.
We have Ronnie Bush here.
We're not paying her. The city of Ranger's been paying her. But she worked for the city of Ranger. We, it's, it's kind of like a joint agreement we have with the fire departments, with the police department. We help each other out. We've needed help through the years to get this done and she has been available and helped. Why is this coming up now? Because she's no longer employed by the city of Ranger. So we still need her help. So we need to hire her as our Associate Municipal Court Judge so we can keep her as a judge. If we don't do that, then we can't use her because she's not a judge, she's not doing that job anymore. So we, we're kind of keeping her attached to that judge title by having her part of our city now. And it's a contract, we pay her two hundred and fifty dollars a month. It's kind of contract labor, she doesn't really work for the city. The only benefit she gets is the benefit of working with our wonderful people over here. Been doing it for ten years herself.
And she, it's like an Easton, if they're, they're a judge, they're like an Easton County magistrate. So you call, and that's why she was coming from Ranger, am I correct?
Yes, the two years that I've been the chief here, we have pretty much used her exclusively on the juvenile part. And she's the one that knows how to do it, she's always once available. We had major issues with availability, this allows us to keep operating and using somebody that our investigators want to use that knows what they're doing. So this was a fix to keep that operation going.
And get off the hot seat with the county.
Now, she lives in Ranger. And she lives in Cisco.
So, uh, it's just keeping us, we've got access to a judge to take care of our business and that's what this is about. And all of my, you know, I've been asked several questions about this in the last few days and it only comes about because she's no longer employed in the city of Ranger.
Not about Pam Chaney, she's still our, she's still our judge, Jeff.
She's got her hands full. Okay. All right.
This doesn't take anything away or change anything.
It's just making sure we kept her on because we've really had to rely on her a lot. Pam's had her plate pretty full and we, she, we've been using her for a long, long time. And all, we know it's over nine years.
I wasn't aware of it, but.
I knew that. Three days ago and my phone went.
We used Ronnie Bush at one time, we paid him.
She was never being paid for anything that she was doing. The, the calls that she was doing, it was just based off of her judgeship with, her magistrate with Ranger as her employer.
Okay, sure.
And it's part of that joint, how we share and help each other, they've been allowed to do that. Okay, entertained a motion to approve the hiring of Tammy Archer as Associate Municipal Court Judge.
I moved to hire Tammy Archer as Associate Municipal Court Judge.
Motion from Richard.
I'm second from motion.
Second from Carol, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same time. Motion carries. Manager, manager briefing.
Hey, on your, Tony, will you pull that up, please? Okay, on this, whichever, you can start with the, it's the ones in red, yours is the yellow one. Start with North, North Basset.
Basset.
Yeah, that's fine. So the, I took these pictures this afternoon. The streets are continuing to progress, they've moved over to North Basset, this is North Basset. You can go next. This is Rosswood. Next. One more. And this is West Moss and Dodery Avenue. We have, I've said for like the last three months that they're working on West Moss. West Moss has just kind of held up because there's a gas line where all this dirt is that Atmos is going to have to come through and replace, it's not to their specs. So they had to bid this job out and now that's held us up a little bit. But as soon as they have their work complete, the rest of this concrete will be poured here and on Dodery Avenue. Down there, down that road. This is West Moss down by Crowder's. And this is also West Moss by Crowder's, just looking in a direction. So that's the update, well, that's it. That's the update for the streets. Texas Water Development Board, we had an update after this was already printed. I received a message from Jonathan, our engineer, that Texas Water Development Board is reviewing, they're currently in a review stage of the packet that was sent to them with the contract. They have a few questions that the contractor Fambro Construction will have to answer. But once that's answered, they presume that they're going to be able to sign off on it and we'll move forward. So I'm hoping within the next few weeks we'll be there. Fingers crossed. He does have all his pipe already in, that's already in and sitting at our yard. So he's ready to go as soon as they sign off and we have a pre-construction meeting. Uh, we had a meeting with the mayor and Tex dot and Gary Ford. We talked about some sidewalks downtown. They're going to be redoing certain areas of sidewalks that their funding, that they've prioritized with their funding, some extra funding that they've received to make it more ADA compliant in specific areas, so those are chosen by Tex dot. Uh, wild card mitigation, it's really not an update other than what was there last time. Wasn't supposed to be there still, but we're having a meeting this week and so I'll have more for the next report. The pavilion at the park, uh, construction has began, they're actively pouring concrete today and they're still raising funds because they want to pursue a secondary playground set of equipment to expand on the playground equipment up there. And then the Rips Ribs and Wine Festival is April twelfth and the Easton Chamber of Commerce has more information available for wine tickets and the cost if you would like to pursue that.
Wild card mitigation plan, where are we as far as a timeline? Isn't that a five-year?
Yes.
Timeline and we're cutting into that timeline.
Yes.
What is? I know you're having a meeting this week, is that?
Yes, we are, currently Bobby and I are going through and creating a bid, a list of items to put out for bid, um, equipment items. And we're, all the cities are getting together this week here Thursday and we're going to discuss our progress, where each of us are. And we are, all the cities are getting together this week here, um, Thursday, and we're going to discuss our progress, where each of us are, and what we're, what point we're at and where we're at.
Cisco, Ranger, Eastland, and Gorman?
Carden, not Carden.
Carden?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a question for city manager? Thank you very much. Code enforcement?
Uh, commissioners, we opened up February with seventeen cases. Terry opened up nine, Newland closed three. Of those, um, they left us with twenty-three per month. Uh, total violations opened, twenty-six. Total violations closed were five. Um, had one case reported for back taxes, three annual notices were given out. And the lien that is filed is the total for the demo house off of, uh, Wes Patterson. So that total there, that eleven four sixty is for the demo itself, for the, um, roll-offs, and, uh, the, uh, any fees for filing, including.
Okay.
So when that one ends up going up for sale, hopefully we'll get some of that back.
Okay. What is the status of the property on North Virginia, the absolute disaster at North Virginia?
The one, um, Mr. Thomas?
The one you've been working on?
That one with them. We've been working with, uh, his daughter, attempting to get both the one there on the corner and the one, um, that they have that's closer to, um, Commerce Main, clean both of them clean up. With him, we've got citations out against him, but with him being as, as old as he is, and I know that he's not in good health right now, I'm not sure if he's still living on the property or not. Um, uh, he's lost his wife recently, and, um, we went by there the other day and took pictures of the property. It looks like somebody's been in the backyard getting rid of some things. There, there's not as much bulk as there was, but with that property, there's so much, you could carry off, you know, five, five trailers full and it wouldn't make it in.
Wouldn't miss it.
So.
The property there that you see in the curve, if I understand it right, you've got a house just south of that, but behind that is this guy's property as well, down to the, kind of wrapped around that one house sitting in the middle.
There's some of it, it goes over there by, uh, Ms. Tucker's home. Are you talking about?
Well, there's, I drove over the day because of the fire y'all had on North Virginia. I drove up there and saw that disaster. And, uh, not the fire, the house, the, this property. And there's a house, there, there, there's his metal fence and the junkyard and all of that stuff. Then there's a house, and then there's more metal fence and junk, and it's all of that one property, that entire.
You know what? Let's take a look. I can pull it up right now on the CAD, and we can see.
Well, we've been talking about this property for, I'm gonna say, close to a year.
Yes, we have.
What? And, and there've been excuses, I think, from them, uh, and I'm not being cold-hearted here, but we need some kind of a plan of action that we're going to do something with that property.
We, it's, it, it's to the point right now where we, it, it would probably be a good idea if we sat down together as a group, city manager, myself, Terry, and you as well, and see what, what options we want to look at with him. Because with the age that he's at, and, um, there, his financial situation, I don't know what we're gonna be able to get done from him himself. There may have to be something to where we maybe do, uh, an abatement from the city, um, to, to do something about that. I, I just don't know what compliance we'll get from him himself, because it's, property's in his name last we know. Now, I know the property that's farther south on Virginia there, um, portion of it is his daughter's now. But, um, I mean, I'm more than willing to, to have that meeting to see what options we want to go with.
Swobal Thompson.
So here, yeah, Swobal Thompson's, uh, so this is, this is one of his properties here.
Well, he's right on the curve, and that's not right on the curve. There's that little tank. He's north of that.
No, no, but yeah, that, that is one of his properties. This is the one where he is out on the right of way and spilling onto a neighboring home.
Okay, now how much, now that you own that, how much, where does he own and not own?
Well, this parcel here is his, and then another problem that we have out here, though, is that the, the shapes, the shape file that we get from the CAD is not exact.
Okay, going, going from the corner south, how much of that does he own?
He owns, uh, this property here, and that's it, because this is a novel legacy. This is an LLC that owns the property.
Who owns the property south of where you are right now?
Of this one?
No, south, right, right in there. There's more junk. There's another metal fence and more junk building up down in, right in there somewhere.
Yeah, that's, that's back closer to here.
Yeah, well, is that it down at the bottom right there?
That's, that's the, uh, this is the one, yeah, because you can see the trash and stuff on its face.
Well, who owns that property?
This one is George Falk. Oh, and Lisa Thomas, so this is gonna be his daughter.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. So, and I know that they have been cleaning out trash from over here as well, as the, the bulk of stuff that was down here. Um, I mean, with these properties, I'd be very happy to, to, for us to get together and.
Well, we need to get our heads together. We need to know something needs to happen, and, and, and I hate that he's in bad health. I hate that he's old, but it happens. But if he were to die tomorrow, it would be catastrophic trying to get that fixed.
Right, and that's what I'm afraid we're gonna have to deal with now, with, with him even, with him owning the property is just, you know, the sheer amount of, of work and money it's probably gonna take for that to be removed is, is something else.
Well, he's got so much junk there. If you haul it all to the metal plant, you'd probably come out ahead.
That's what we've said too. I mean, there's, I mean, you could probably start a really bad navy with all the boats that are out there as well.
I'm, he's got a lot of everything.
He does, he does, and none of it's good, but he keeps.
Okay, we need a plan. We need to, we need to get this one moving somewhere.
You bet.
At least know what we can and can't, quit talking about it. If we can't do anything, then shut up, or let's go get done what we can get done.
Okay.
Whatever. Okay, any other questions for code enforcement? Thank you, Tony.
Yes, sir.
Police Department?
Yes, sir. Uh, in February, we answered two hundred and fifty calls for service. We had nineteen arrests, fifty case reports were generated, thirty-three agency assists, seven hundred and thirty-three business checks were done. We, uh, worked five traffic crashes, which was down a little bit, eight domestic violences. We filed ten cases with the district attorney's office, zero juveniles in February, and then we did fifteen open record requests. On the traffic side of things, uh, guys wrote two hundred citations, four hundred and eighty-one warnings were issued, and six hundred and eighty-one traffic stops. And on the animal control side, we did, uh, fifty-one calls for service. Getting that one, we're in the process of trying to get another full-time ACL on, so that one's been a little hard for us, but Blake's been filling in for us thankfully. Um, we had zero citations issued, zero warnings, thirteen impound, seven adopted, and zero quarantine. We, uh, served, we made three substantial narcotics arrests. We did ten arrest warrants were served. Uh, Officer Heath Oakley, we got him out now. He's on and going. He's doing a fantastic job for us. We're excited to have him. Uh, DPS came in and recertified all the officers and some of the new ones on stop sticks, which is our tire deflation devices that we use to stop pursuits without having to cause wrecks or, or anything like that. We're excited about that. Uh, all Eastland PD officers were certified on all three lethal weapons systems this month in February. Sergeant Almond, who is an instructor in several things, but is instructor in standardized field sobriety testing, which is DWI enforcement, taught at the Parker County Police Academy, and he also taught at the West College Police Academy in Atheling. So we're proud of him for stepping up and taking care of that and training our next generation of officers.
Did he go to Parker County and to?
Yes, sir. He goes to Parker County, and he goes to.
Okay, cool. How often does he do that?
Uh, right now, it's been about once a month. That, that's a week-long course that they teach, so he gets to go down there and teach that. And like for West College, we traded out, and with Parker County, for, they give us a whole lot of training on the other end of it, so.
That's good.
He gets to go teach that, teach him up to date. He also teaches here in the county as well. He's, he's taught there, but we do all classes here also.
Oh, the tire deflation system, how often do you have to use those?
Uh, we, we actually have not deployed them one time. They've tried a couple of times, uh, we're, well, I, I don't, we did a lot DPS, but they're out there and they set them up, which is good. Keep pursuits can come into our town, but, uh, there, it's gonna, it's coming where they're gonna get it done.
I saw a video the other day, a device on the front of a police car that go up and pick up their car.
Yeah, oh, there's all kinds of devices out there.
What you do in a front-wheel drive.
We use the spike system when I was with DPS, which we use it all the time, and these stop sticks, this kind of, you know, alleviates having to ram people off the road, or put yourself in dangerous situations, and it allows the tires to be deflated slowly. So it's like a syringe tube. You throw it out there in front of them, hits their tires, several of them, and it's, it's like a syringe tube, which we equate it to. And it lets the air out the tube slowly without blowing the tire and causing a wreck.
How does it stay attached to the tire?
It, it, it goes off the system itself and sticks into the tire and stays there and comes loose in the system.
It's like a port around coil. It's pretty legal.
Of the old one?
Yeah.
So really, I mean, we've been using them for years. I didn't understand why we didn't have one when I got here, but we got them as quick as we could. They're, they're a tool that is absolutely a necessity for a local agency, and it's just a matter of time for it.
To do. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Pitt? Chief Williamson, thank you.
We did get a little break in February. We only made seventy-two calls for service, so, uh, it's kind of interesting. Uh, as a fire chief in my fourth year, so you're starting my fifth, that seventy-two calls is considered a somewhat of a break. But, uh, I looked today at the runs that we're making for March. I mean, if we continue at this pace, we'll, we'll have a whole different report next month. Uh, so for, for February, we averaged two point six calls a day, fifty-nine were in the city, and twelve, uh, were outside the city limits and the county, and we assisted our neighbors, uh, one of our neighbors on one mutual aid call. We did get to install one smoke detector, uh, during February. Um, ten calls rang out, um, after ten o'clock at night or before seven in the morning, and we had zero structure fires this month, which is, um, whi- which is really a good statistic due to the very low temperatures that we experienced during February, which elevates our, our, our residential fire risk, so. So zero, uh, uh, I hope to be able to contribute that to our fire prevention. I don't know, but, uh, it's a good statistic. We had four grass slash some type of trash miscellaneous fire, one vehicle fire, thirty-nine calls to assist EMS service. Uh, we had one motor vehicle accident, which is finally interesting to listen to the chief's statistics he reported there. Working accidents were down, and then ours, our responses were down too. So those, those statistics coincide, fifteen public assists, nine false alarms, and two some, so, uh, we were dispatched for some type of investigation. We were dispatched to one rescue, zero hazardous material incidents, and we actually took on seven new members of this month. And six of those members are cadets in our fire academy, who will, who are, once we get them trained, credentialed to a specific, uh, a level of firefighter one, they'll be eligible for the VCP program. And we're seeing these, uh, some of our cadets are kind of excited about that working with our department.
How were you able to use the other night on the, the other night on the fire on North Virginia? You said something about having them and able to roll hoses and kind of train them.
It was a, 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 a very unforecasted benefit. Uh, that fire came in at two thirty. Um, uh, somewhere around two thirty in the afternoon, and our fire academy was to, uh, meet, uh, class was that night from six to ten. So, uh, the fire went to what I would call three alarms. It was upgraded three times. We had six departments out of the eight departments in the county there. Um, and, uh, and so, um, not counting the structure that was involved, we had about a half an acre of outside storage material, um, and, uh, that had also been on fire through the grass and these, and tires and, and different types of outside storage, um, material, uh, equipment. So we had to focus, uh, sincerely on overhaul, because they were forecasting the fifty mile an hour winds the next day. So we had to put every piece of ember, anything burning, smoldering, had to be completely, um, extinguished. Uh, because we would have had any rekindle the next day, it would have, it would have hit, and, and, you, you know, we could all see the outcome, the potential outcome of that, uh, the grass fire potential. So we worked, the fire academy came out, and, uh, we have sixteen students broke, broke into four person, the engine companies. So we broke them up, their engine company, and they got to, and rotated them through several tasks, rolling hose, extinguishing. Uh, we had some work inside the building, so they got to use their packs, and so a lot of them cadets, they had no fire experience, so it was, it was very good for them. We ended up getting them back to the station, and then we had to reload, uh, a large amount of cotton refill. We went through our air bottles twice, so we extinct, uh, uh, exhausted them all in the steam. We brought them back to pickup, built them up, brought them back out and re-exhausted them. Yes, we were filling twenty-two air bottles. It's just, we all, we left the station about midnight, and the cadets were sitting in place, and so.
That fire was actually in the county. Didn't you say that?
It, it was. The, the, the fence line, the fence line for the, the southern fence line was the city levels. So we were just north into the county.
So a little drive right there by that fence, that was the county, the other side of the fence was the city.
It, where the property y'all were just referencing. Yeah, right, we were just north of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Thursday, the fire academy takes their midterm exam, so that's kind of where we're at in it. Uh, the Eastland Fire Department, our channel frequency repeater will be repaired, uh, tomorrow. Um, the HVAC system project, uh, we've got, we've had three vendors bid. We're waiting on the third bid. So I contacted them today. They were supposed to call me back. I never heard from them, so I will look forward to follow-up tomorrow. Once we get that third bid, uh, we will sit down with the city manager. Myself and the deputy chief are gonna put together a packet project, um, on some of the, uh, options on how best to, uh, mitigate this project and see where to go from there.
Okay. Anything else for Chief Williamson? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Y'all, we say.
Thank you.
All right, and you've got the municipal court that pointed out there's a typo in the top line of that deal.
Yes, it should equal, your year-to-date internal faces should equal one thousand one hundred and eleven.
One thou- One thousand one hundred and eleven, so instead of a zero.
Should've been one.
Should've been one. I think, well, two zeros off and a one on. Wow. Not bad. Good job, Terry.
Any questions on the municipal court report?
Okay, no questions. Thank you very much.
How many were during?
And you've got a motion from Terry to adjourn, and a second, did Richard make the motion?
I did.
You made the motion, Terry made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. You got a note, thank you note from the.
Yeah, I saw it.
Volunteer from the hospital, if you hadn't seen that. Thank y'all.